Good evening. I would like to call the... What is this? January City Council Meeting to Order. If all the council members could take their seats, we can get the meeting started. We'll give Nick a minute. With that, I would like to call the January City Council Meeting to Order. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Lanning?
President.
Ms. Hopkins?
President.
Ms. Stichos? Ms. Boye?
President.
Ms. Boye?
Here. President.
Ms. Redford? Thank you.
President. 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 Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our goal.
With that, I will open the floor for any public acknowledgements or commendations. Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, President. This is a great honor for me, having spent most of my life working at Cranston East, both as a teacher and as the athletic director for a long time. And also knowing that the head coach played on the same high school team when I did, and we're both Panthers and hot, but we get paid by Cranston East, so we root for them. But this is a great pleasure to have this before us tonight. And what I'd like to do is read the proclamation and then have the coach come up, and then possibly the players come up and take some pictures. The city of Cranston be it known to all that the Cranston City Council hereby issues this congratulatory citation to the Cranston High School East Football Varsity Team in capturing the 2017 Division One Super Bowl Championship, 2017 Division One B Co-Regular Season Championship, and ending its season with an incredible 11-2 record. And at this point, I'd like to bring up Councilman McCauley, representing the eastern side of the city, and Coach Suntory. If you could come up and represent these proclamations to you.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Even though I was a graduate of Cranston West, I am very proud of the boys from Cranston East. Not to make Mr. Suntory feel old, but he was my sixth-grade teacher, oddly enough. Congratulations, guys. With that, I will close the section on public acknowledgements and commendations. We will move into public hearings on doctored matters. I'll run into public sometime. Actually, I'll give you... I'll talk really slowly, give the football players a chance to mosey out of the room. Go study, boys. With that, I will open public hearings for any doctored matters. Any residents who would like to come up and speak for four minutes? If anyone would like to speak, now's your opportunity. Step up to the mic, name and address to the record.
Ms. Scotty, I'm from the old north of Cranston. And I'm pretty proud of my daughter.
Can you hit the button on the mic? It says "push" on the base.
Sorry, I thought I had a loud enough voice.
That's for the stenographer. He types in here.
Anyway, so we... Myself and my friends, but she has the flu and her husband is home taking care of her. So we usually go down to South Kingston. I was down there on Saturday. And, well, it's very... I brought her because she's not... We can't have, in my opinion, having dogs for so long and having her so tiny. Having small dogs with those big bully breeds, really scary. I would never do it. And there was a man there that had a beautiful white standard doodle, which is that high. He would not put his dog with those other dogs. So that dog was with our dogs.
I think so.
Small dog. So I understand from Mr. Stichos's email that you only want to have one area for all the dogs? When we need two, is that...
Well, currently, there's an ordinance before the council to turn Beachmont Avenue Field into a dog park. Currently, the area is two basketball courts. If we were to make the whole area a dog park, it would still only be a dog park for small dogs because of the size of the area. So this would be one dog park. The issue that we're going to take up tonight is, do you make half a dog park and half a basketball court, or the whole thing a dog park? So in reality, it would still just be a dog park for small dogs.
Well, the thing is, some people, like I just told you, they don't bring... They won't put their dog with the big dog.
This would be a dog park for dogs under 35 pounds only?
They don't do it, though. They bring their big dogs anyway. I mean, there was actually a bulldog in there. And I had to keep on like... I could get bitten. I keep on going like this, you know? I keep them away. They don't like it if I use my little water bottle. They don't like the water bottle.
I can imagine that.
I could probably get bitten. So it is more serious. I'm not going to let anything... Anybody get to her. See? Very tiny.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi.
Good evening.
Ms. Mary Jane Bowlin. I live at 147 Ferncrest Avenue.
Good evening.
I'll start by saying I was once attacked by a little dog. I have two dogs. I have Yorke Poo. He's part Yorkshire, part standard poo. Part doodle, not standard. He's little. And I have another mutt that my son rescued in Virginia, who's probably about 35 pounds. She's scared of her own shadow. I am very much in favor of a dog park of some sort. I prefer it. You know, dogs are very social, and for the most part, they do get along. And I think most people who have large dogs that would attack or go after something know enough, hopefully, to stay away. My thing... I grew up in Boston, lived in Foxborough, and moved to Virginia after the Blizzard of '78. And we lived there for 30 years. And we chose to retire here in Rhode Island. I didn't know anybody here. And I would walk my dog, who was a lab at the time, a white lab, all around. And at that time, there were people... And we would gather in the mornings with our dogs. The nice thing about that was, we're all talking about peace. You probably, a lot of you, don't even know your next-door neighbors or people on your... Well, I'm sure the councilmen do. But it's nice to meet your neighbors, to discuss things with them, to... You know, that Blizzard of '78, I remember everybody met everybody because you had to walk, you know? So I just think having the whole thing as a park and not another basketball court, there are plenty of places for kids to play basketball. So that's just, I guess, what I have to say, is I really would like to see a dog park. And I'm not... I guess the decision has already been made to make it for just small dogs, if there is one. But anyway, just in the name of starting to learn who our neighbors are, which is one of the beginning steps to getting along with people who come from other countries, we have to start somewhere. It has to begin at home. And when you walk down the street, smile at someone, say hello. They won't bite you. I do it all the time, and I've made a lot of friends in Rhode Island because of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public to speak? Good evening. Name and address to the record.
Good evening. My name is Pauline Ballard. My address is 74 Gordon Street in Cranston. I'm not on the agenda, so if you need to speak last, I don't have a problem with that.
By our rules, if you're speaking on something that's not on the agenda, you'd have to come back in probably about 25 minutes when we do the second section of public hearings.
Okay.
We should be pretty quick. There's not a lot of business before us tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak on doctored matters? There being none, I will close that section of the meeting. Resolutions, there are none. Report of Committee: Safety Services and Licensing. Council Majority Leader Paproskas.
Good evening, Mr. Council President. We have a transfer of Class B Limited to Class B Victamine New over the cap for Benvenuto Restaurant, 1785 Cranston Street.
That's an motion approved. So moved. Second. I have a motion to second. Under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Stichos?
Yes.
Ms. Boye?
Yes.
Ms. Boye?
Yes.
Ms. Paproskas?
Yes.
Ms. Redford?
Yes.
Ms. Paproskas?
Yes. Thank you, Council Majority Leader. Moving on to Finance. Council Vice President Vivek Yeh.
Thank you, Council President. We have a resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements passed unanimously in committee.
That's an motion approved?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion to second. Under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Stichos?
Yes.
Ms. Boye?
Yes.
Ms. Paproskas?
Yes.
Ms. Paproskas?
Yes.
Ms. Redford?
Yes.
Ms. Paproskas?
Yes.
Next, we had the Tax Interest Waiver Approvals passed unanimously. I'd urge passage.
Now, is there a motion approved?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion to second. Under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Ms. Stichos?
Yes.
Ms. Boye?
Ms. Paproskas?
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Ms. Paproskas?
Yes.
Ms. Paproskas?
Yes.
Ms. Redford?
Yes. Yes. That's all I have.
All right. Is that it?
We have one more, Council Vice President Yeh.
My calendar is a little bit messed up, so... Okay, we have 11/17/02, ordinance authorizing the city to utilize Eastern Recreational Impact Fees for a dog park at Beachmont Fields. And this was amended, however, in committee. So I would just remind everyone that the Eastern... The regional impact fees are not going to be touched by this amended ordinance.
Thank you. Without standing motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion approved in a second. Under discussion. Council Vice President Vivek Yeh.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to remind everyone that what was stricken was the first part of it, utilizing the Eastern Recreational Impact Fees for a dog park. It just authorizes the city to create the dog park. And that's just the revised motion.
Thank you for the clarification, Council Vice President. Under discussion. Councilman Stichos.
Well, I believe last month, we continued this because people had questions for the Recreation Director who's here, so...
We did, so...
Maybe it'd be good if they asked the questions.
It would be. This is the proper point under discussion. So if anyone has questions, I would urge them to ask them now. Director Maszkin.
So I do have our Recreation Director here to answer questions about specific planned uses for that location. And Mr. Libetore will be happy to answer the specifics on that. Just to remind you all, as indicated, there is no need for impact fees to be used on this. And before we go down the road of the discussion of the specifics, I want to address the question of whether or not the usage is really of... Should be under the guise of an ordinance or the form of an order than an ordinance. So I would defer to the rec. director on the specifics of the project, but I also would defer to solicitor's opinion as to whether or not this should be voted on as an ordinance or this is simply something that can be done as a resolution once you hear what the parks director has planned.
No problem.
Do you want solicitor's opinion?
Yeah, we'll do solicitor's opinion first since he's ready. And I see no councilman hands up for questions to Mr. Libetore. He can come up and tell us whatever he needs to. Attorney.
Thank you, Council President. I think it was either last meeting or perhaps the meeting prior to that where this issue came up. And specifically, I do recall, Councilman Lanning asked a very excellent question at the time about the difference between a resolution and an ordinance. And at that time, both myself and Mr. Kershaw-Bom I think were on the same page in attempting to explain what the difference is. In the meantime, I did manage to find that Supreme Court case that I had referred to at that earlier meeting. And I'm happy to report that myself and Mr. Kershaw-Bom were pretty much on the money with our explanations vis-à-vis the difference between resolution and ordinance. Having said that, I don't think that we really need to delve that deeply into it for the following reason. It's my understanding that when this ordinance was originally drafted... Excuse me, drafted, the reason was primarily because of a funding issue. Now, that funding issue seems to have been taken off the table. It's been resolved. And as I read this ordinance, essentially, it's extremely bare-bones. It simply says that... It looks like there's a typo. It says "the all of Cranston." And I'm assuming that means the city of Cranston has authorized to construct the dog park. There are no restrictions. There are no requirements. There are no mandates in this ordinance. I believe something of this nature is more appropriately done as a resolution as opposed to an ordinance for a couple of reasons. Number one, I believe, and I think I mentioned this at the prior meeting as well, that there is a line of demarcation between legislative functions and authority and executive or administrative functions and authority. There's no question that funding would be within the purview, I think, of the council to decide prior ordinance. But since that's not been taken off the table, what remains is basically a discretionary administrative function, which I think is within the purview of the executive branch or the administration. So I believe that calling this an ordinance at this point is unnecessary. I think it's superfluous because it really doesn't establish or address anything. I mean, it does state that there is authorization to construct a dog park. Whether or not that authorization is even needed from the council, I'm not so sure that it is. I do think that this is probably something that comes within the discretionary functions and duties under the charter of Parks and Recreation. I think it's analogous to maybe a soccer field, maybe a softball field, basketball court, playground, things of that nature. So having said all of that, I don't think that does any harm if the council still wanted to proceed and call this an ordinance because, as I said, it doesn't really direct the administration. It doesn't handcuff the administration. It doesn't substitute its discretion for the discretion of the director of Parks and Recreation. So I think the council can still proceed if it wanted to. But for future reference, I think sometimes we tend to blur the lines a little bit between what is properly a legislative function and what is more appropriately an administrative or executive function. So...
Thank you, Attorney. Good evening, Director.
Good evening, Council President.
If you'd like, feel free to talk about what's happening at Beachmont.
This specific thing we're talking about, a dog park at Beachmont, there's a history behind what we're doing. And if you'll allow me, I'd like to elaborate on it.
Of course.
In 2015, Smith Street Playground was used as a meeting place for drugs. You used to find hypodermic needles, bags of... Empty bags of cocaine, the little zip locks. And we got together with the Praise Tabernacle Church and Stan Women, which has an organized group which is called Dream Center. And they totally rehabbed Smith Street Playground, which is far and above what it used to be. There are no more issues there. Neighborhood people are watching it. That being said, in 2016, I asked for another meeting about rehabbing the basketball court at Beachmont. And they did a fantastic job. A lot of kids go there. They're off the street and playing. And we needed no authorization from the city council, finance committee, ordinance committee. We didn't have to ask for a resolution. That being said, after the basketball court was completed, we sat down again and decided that we were going to do another basketball court side by side. And the tennis court turned into a small dog park. After rethinking, and here is Mr. Stichos again, we decided that we would not put another basketball court and go from the basketball court to the playground and put a dog park. In that neighborhood, there are many, many dogs. Many people walk in with dogs. And they usually walk on my little details, also located at Beachmont. I think it'd be ideal for that neighborhood. I don't think. Impact fees are required. The only thing we would have to do is encumbering work, let's get the highway department to dig out, break up the asphalt, maybe bring in some gravel. No overtime required. And I don't think it's going to cost the city much except my bond money to maybe help out with some fencing. And it would be split into a big-dog, small-dog area. Not a tremendously big dog park, but enough of that neighborhood for small dogs and big dogs.
Do you have any questions for Director Libetore? I will start with Councilman Lanning.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Libetore, earlier you said on this type of resolution that the recreation department can just handle this as long as an outside party is paying for it. Am I correct?
That is correct.
And you don't need council approval?
Listen, you're a council. I'm saying I don't think I need council approval.
And that's my point. Let's do an exaggeration here. The Red Sox want to buy Cranston Stadium. And they'll pay for the entire thing. All they need is recreation department approval, department approval, using your logic. You wouldn't have to go before the city council or anybody else. Do you find something wrong with that logic?
If they deal directly with me on the sale of Cranston Stadium?
And no city funds are involved, directly with you?
Absolutely not. That is way above my pay grade.
To the Council President, we're not talking about giving away city land. MS Dream Center is providing...
I'm not talking about giving away city land either. I'm talking about leasing or using city land.
They're not. It's all... It's still for our use. It's not that it's the Dreams... The Dream Center isn't using this for their use, Councilman.
They're a volunteer group doing...
No, I know they're a volunteer group. I know it's the... I know it's the Dream Center. I know exactly what they do. And they do great work. I'm not arguing about that at all. I'm just arguing the point of can the recreation department do anything it wishes as long as an outside party is paying for whatever the development is without council approval or any other approval?
Well, I think it's set up in the city charter. The Parks and Recreation Department and their advisory board, which will be meeting on this, has the right to approve anything in the city, recreation-wise. Recreation Department is the only department in the city that can raise money for... Like, I don't want to use the word gifts because that's unethical. That can take contributions to help with building facilities in the city of Cranston.
Point of information, Council President?
Yes, Council Vice President.
I'd like to ask through the chair to either the direct administration or the solicitor. I mean, I think we're talking about apples and oranges here. And I'm talking about purchasing property. We're talking... This is a whole different...
So I think there's been a blurring because of the question of the Eastern Cranston Impact Fees. Even if the Dream Center was not funding this, if there was Eastern Cranston Impact Fees, we'd need ordinance because we typically come to you to ask for you to release funds because we would like to do something at a recreation center. And we need Eastern Cranston Impact Fees. So I would come to the council and I would say, "Look, we want to do this project. We'd like you to release fees. That's your authority, your approval, your power, if you will." So that would be why we would come to you. But specific use of recreational facilities is an administrative function, no different than what type of salt the Public Works Department buys you. You approve a line item to buy salt and sand. So it's... The Parks Director typically will look at... Well, we put a soccer field. And not every soccer field comes to the council. Many do because they require council approval for funding. But if there's money in the budget and the Parks and Rec. Director has money in his budget to do something, it doesn't automatically always come to the council. This one's just a little different because we don't need funding authority for this. I mean, I certainly welcome resolutions from the council. We certainly want the council's support. This is simply the rehabbing of a current recreational facility. There's no need for impact fee release or capital amendment. So we really wouldn't... This wouldn't have even come to the council at all except that the Councilman Stichos wanted a dog park. The authorities in recreational fees were good use of that. In the meantime, we had another source of funding, so there was really no need for an ordinance.
That's right. You, Councilman Manning.
Thank you. This is Mukshin. Follow up on that. I think the last time we met on this, discussed this, we hadn't come to a resolution concerning what exactly was going to go there because you said you had to talk to the Praise Tabernacle Group and the Dream.
Yes.
What exactly are you going to put there now? Can you explain it again?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, say it again, Council President. That's a little thing right there at the end.
All right. What exactly is going to go there? And how many square feet of land are we talking about?
I have those numbers there in my office. We're talking about...
Roughly?
Seven hundred square feet, maybe a thousand square feet.
All right. And you're going to put a basket, a half a basketball court or a full basketball court?
No, the basketball court is there and newly renovated.
All right, that's there.
We eliminated, put in a second basketball court.
Okay, so now it's going to be a dog park.
And made it from the fencing of the basketball court over to the playground.
Okay.
Which is fenced in in case there's any worry about the kids and the dog park being together.
All right. And it's going to be a small dog park for small dogs?
Because of the area and because of my knowledge and maybe Mr. Stychos' knowledge of the area, there are a small group of people in that area. We would still like to split it right in the middle and have an entrance for big dogs and small dogs. So, we don't want to live with the liability of a big dog biting a small dog.
No, I understand that. So, it's going to be fenced, there'd be two entrances. Do you think you really have enough room for two, a split dog park like that?
Yes, sir.
If I may also, and I think this is, it's separate and apart from this discussion but related, the city also is discussing actively a dog park location for a larger dog park elsewhere in the city that we would be working with the council and the council's grant writer to also establish another dog park in the city as well. So, we're committed to having the dog parks. I think right now the discussion is really much more of a procedural question than what we all probably really want there. And I think we're actually all in agreement on what we want.
Okay. Thank you. As a point of information to expound on Director Mukshin, I will be calling a special meeting in the next couple of weeks. The snow kind of pushed us back a little bit. But now that it's thawed, we've had the ability to go look at a couple of additional sites. And I'll be presenting a resolution back to the council, hopefully, and having a public hearing on it to discuss the second location in the next week and a half to two weeks. So, we will talk about that very shortly.
If I may, Council President?
You may, if you'd like to expound on what's due your thunder, Director.
One of the locations we're looking at right now, and I do believe Lisa Kirshenbaum is working on a grant, Stony Acre, which is ideal. We've already got flat land. It's about 1.3 acres of land. And if we could get approval from the council, there's also area for a parking lot right off Stony Acre Drive, which is presently city property.
So, to our efforts, we will have a real dog park?
A real dog park.
Thank you. Councilman Manning, if you want to follow up?
I just want to expound on that. That's my neighborhood. And there's an awful lot of people walking dogs in my neighborhood. I think it's an excellent location. I give you a lot of credit for thinking about it. Thank you.
Okay.
Are we done? Councilman Stychos?
Well, thank you, Tony, for your plan. And I think it's, I think it's a good plan. The only thing that I would suggest is to be open to it being changed a little bit. I don't know how much the dog park is going to be used. I don't know if the two, if it would work with two, the big and the small. But I think it makes sense to try it, to accommodate everybody. And then if it isn't working, you know, make an adjustment there. So...
Well, so that we don't have to spend more money on top of what the Praise Tabernacle Bah, not choir, church is going to be doing. When we put the fence across to separate both areas, in the middle of that fence, we'll put a double swing gate. So, if the idea does not work and they're too small, we just open up those two gates and they can use the whole.
Yeah, that's, that's good. That's good. So, thank you. And I think we're all on the same page. And I don't really think we need this arguing over the, whether the council can direct this or not. I think that the recreation director is certainly the one who has to establish rules within the ordinance that's already passed on dog parks, on how to run the place. And hopefully, we can get some residents of the area to kind of adopt it as their thing.
A lot of people are favorable to that.
Yeah, and keep it, keep it clean because that's always a problem with a dog park and get some...
But if they don't keep it clean, the Parks and Recreation Department can always go there and clean it.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, you don't have to do that. And do some nice landscaping there to make it look good. So, thank you.
Councilman Poplaskas, and then Council Vice President.
Through the chair to Director Libertori, what do you think the timeframe would be once you get the ball rolling on getting this bill?
Well, you've got to, we can't touch anything until at least late March, early April. I would say about three months. Because Praise Tabernacle Church, they get their funding from Lumschabilla.
Okay.
And I believe they've already started that process, but we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Council Vice President? Thank you, Council President. Just one other thing. I, I think that when I amended, I think, I believe I asked to amend this originally. I thought it should be a resolution authorizing the city to create a dog park at Beachmont Field because I don't think we're amending the ordinance. This particular ordinance is, I think, an Eastern utility, Eastern recreational impact ordinance. So, I think it should be more of a, it should be a resolution asking the city to create this dog park as opposed to an amended to an ordinance because I don't, we're not using the money anyway. We're using other funds. So, I'll offer that as an amendment to change the title, just so that it doesn't amend that ordinance and change the charter.
I have a motion to amend the title to eliminate East impact fees in a second. And a discussion, Councilman Stychos?
I'd like to ask Mr. Kirshenbaum if he thinks the city council has the authority to establish a use in a public park. A specific use?
I don't mean to dodge the question, but it is an interesting question. I think if there was something that the council passed that was part of the capital budget, then you could do it as part of an ordinance. But just to use routine budget money and direct the administration to do something that before was not contemplated or budgeted within the budget itself or the capital budget, I don't think the council could do that. But I couldn't ask for us. I want to look at that issue a little more.
Through the chair, Council President?
Yes, Director.
In my capital budget that I'll be proposing for the next fiscal year, the 1718 Stony Acre Dog Park will be in my capital budget. The money will be in there above what we may need from grant money. So, if council approves the capital budget, they're approving the Stony Acre Dog Park.
Thank you, Director.
There'd be no need to back that around again.
Agreed. Councilman Hopkins?
Through the President to Mr. Libertori. Presently, you are in the middle of a project building a softball field.
What I have on our board of orders?
Yes, your point of order?
We have a motion to change the ordinance to a resolution to the second. That is not changing anything.
That is true. That is not a parliamentary procedure. Councilman Hopkins, once we finish the discussion on this, we will see where we can go with yours. So, any discussion on changing the ordinance to a resolution?
I'm not getting any younger.
You may, Director. Apologies for keeping you so long this evening. Any discussion on changing the ordinance to a resolution? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Paulson?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Fuss?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. The ordinance is now a resolution, so the amendment has a resolution.
Any further discussion? Councilman Hopkins?
It's through the chair to the Director.
I would ask that you keep the comments germane to the subject at hand, which is Beachmont Field. So, if you have other questions?
My point of order would be in reference to doing a project. And what permission did he get to do that project? Did he have to ask for permission?
That is actually coming up in front of the councils and ordinance next month.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Paulson?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. To the council, we have a woman who came here this evening to make a presentation during the first part of the meeting on the opioid crisis on the, basically, the press conference that happened today. So, if you would, no one objects? She has another function to get to this evening to do this presentation again. If no one objects, I'd like for her to come to the podium, give her name and address, and give the presentation now and direct her if you want to add anything.
Just very briefly, Ms. Mancuso is working with Lieutenant Governor's Office addressing some concerns regarding the opioid crisis nationwide and particularly in Rhode Island. We met as a group of administrative leaders where Ms. Mancuso made an in-depth presentation. They also, as they announced the press conference today, are going to communities to also present to communities and councils briefly what they're doing collectively and hoping to do collectively with different municipalities. I would ask that you listen to Ms. Mancuso's presentation, what the administration is offering to do with the council, is after you listen because this will involve potential litigation. Any questions we collectively may have together, we might have in a future executive session where we will decide how to proceed together as a city, both council and administration. So, tonight is purely informative, and I will turn it over to Ms. Mancuso.
First of, any objection? Ms. Mancuso speaking. Seeing none, Ms. Mancuso.
It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Eva Marie Mancuso. I'm a born and raised resident of Ward One, graduate of Cranston East. And every time I walk into Cranston City Hall, I feel like I'm home. Having said that, I live in the town of East Greenwich, which is where my next presentation is in about an hour. So, we're on the road. About 15 years ago, I, as a civil trial attorney, I had the opportunity to work with a couple of national law firms on issues affecting public health and public administration. And so, about a year ago, they contacted me and said, do you think Rhode Island might be interested in the opioid litigation that we're working on? Having had a working relationship with Lieutenant Governor Dan McKee and also knowing that he had a consortium of mayors already put together, I asked him if it would be something he'd be interested in learning about. To that end, around December, we met with the cities and towns managers. And I brought in my national team. Part of the team has already left to go on to Green Bay, Wisconsin, tonight in the middle of the storm. And also with me here today is attorney Jim Magazine from the Florida Law Firm of Lucason Magazine. We're a consortium of six law firms together taking on the manufacturers, but more importantly, the distributors on the opioids, the three major manufacturers. We got together today and did the press conference because internally, we kind of made the decision that once we were representing more than 40% of the residents of the state of Rhode Island, that we would go public so that everybody knew what we were doing on behalf of the cities and towns. I'm here respectfully to ask you to join in that. And let me break it down for you. It's not a class action suit. It's what we call multi-district litigation. So, the lawsuit would be filed, the city of Cranston versus the three big drug opiate defendants? Excuse me.
Can you tell us about a lawsuit?
This is the lawsuit that's been filed in Ohio on behalf of 300 cities and towns like this. So, it's a lawsuit on behalf of each city or town. And what that does is that gives you local control over any settlement or disposition of the case. Very different than a case like, say, Google that you read about where a few communities got a whole bucket of money and also a lot of direction as to how they had to spend it. What I like about this is it's local control so that the city of Cranston would decide, first of all, what your law enforcement costs have been up to date and what your first responder costs have been, police, fire, Narcan, all of the public safety aspects in the past. Take that and look at what it would be in the future. And more importantly, what it would take to do this right because we got one chance to do this right. We have lost a generation of really kids and young people to this opioid epidemic. And these are good people. These are people that started out with a wisdom tooth or an ACL tear or a soccer mom that pulls her elbow that then start on this line of opiate addiction. And then what we've seen in Rhode Island over the last several years is a 100% increase in deaths due to opioids, 100% in our little state. And also, what we've seen over the last year or so is because the manufacturers are now starting to pay attention about how many pills, see, now you're going to know that I'm related to Kenny Mancuso when I get my Irish up, right? When I get going about it, I get upset because of the amount of pills that they put into our community. What happened is now they cut back. So, all these addicted people, where are they going to? Fentanyl and heroin. Heroin is like one milliliter off from opioids. And so, now we have these good people that end up on this terrible, terrible train that leaves them in the end, a lot of times with a criminal conviction or certainly with something bad on their record. So, now they're not even employable. And what we want to do is go after the people that caused it. You know, the Lieutenant Governor today, his comment resonated with people. You know, everybody wants to talk about the bad docs. Well, the bad doctors lose their license. Or the bad pharmacists that do things bad, they lose their license. Both of them go to jail. The only people that have not been held responsible are the big three manufacturers, three big distributors of opioids. So, in really a nutshell, without taking too much time tonight, that's the introduction. It was really important for me that you hear directly from me at a time when you would hear a lot of press about it so that you understood what we were doing. At some point in time, I'd like to ask, since I've already sent the fee agreement out to your mayor, I hope that that gets circulated, which I believe it will, to the town council. I'd like for you to, the city council, I'd like for you to retain us, to bring this on. It's a, as we say, a no-brainer because we're going to bear the cost of litigation as a group. And we're also, we would be looking for a fee in the end if, in fact, we're successful. So, it's a straight contingency fee agreement on behalf of the city of Cranston. And I can tell you that it's something that, I'm a lifelong Rhode Islander. I'm not going anywhere. Not retiring to Florida, not going to the Cape, not going anywhere else. And so, when I see litigation that really could affect the next generation of Rhode Islanders and in particular Cranstonians, it resonates with me. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. You don't want to take any questions?
This was for informational purposes only. If we do move forward and a resolution or an ordinance is developed, we would then have a public hearing on the matter and would filter questions through that way.
Great. Thank you very much.
Councilman Arkel?
General comment, Council President Swannick, Eva, you've been commended for hard work on this issue as a very serious critical issue.
Thank you.
Eva and I graduated Cranston together. Eva was in the top of her division, the last bit I was doing in their class, but I was weak.
Thank you for coming tonight, Eva. We appreciate the informational presentation.
Thank you very much.
I'm with the business of the evening. Ordinance Committee, Council, Majority Leader Poplaskas.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. We have 11-1701, ordinance amendment of Title 10, code of city of Cranston, 2005, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, No Parking on Certain Streets Generally, now against a boulevard at Hudson Street, Sefton, and Strathmore. And this passed ordinance committee unanimously, sponsored by Councilman Stychos.
Do I motion approve?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. I motion a second on a discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Fink?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Fink?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Fink?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Fink?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Fink?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Councilman O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Open hearings. This section of the docket is open to residents to speak on any matters that they would like to bring before the council.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, Council President.
Good evening. Name and address, direct.
My name is Pauline LeWalle. I live at 74 Gordon Street in Cranston, Rhode Island.
Good evening, Pauline.
I'm here tonight and actually presenting an open letter to Mayor Alan Fung, the city of Cranston, and the Cranston School Department and the city council. On November 1st of 2017, dozens and dozens of children and staff inside Cranston East High School were struck and sickened by carbon monoxide poisoning originating from the building. Several students, including my daughter Trudy Brusina, were admitted to Hasbro Hospital on multiple occasions and dates.
Could you slow down?
Oh, I'm sorry. On November 1st, 2017, due to carbon monoxide poisoning and exposure, my daughter needed to be fully resuscitated. Sorry. On multiple occasions, her and several other students were admitted and treated under emergency situations with oxygen. My daughter's blood work confirmed on more than seven occasions in the month of November and December, when she ultimately became so ill that she was hospitalized for more than five days. This student has been continually exposed to carbon monoxide coming from Cranston High School East. Sorry.
It's okay. Take your time.
She suffered multiple illnesses and symptoms consistent with carbon monoxide exposure and poisoning and was diagnosed with such on 13 occasions in November and into December. As a result, my daughter is not attending school at this point in time. She is receiving tutoring, which was just started for her. Took two and a half months to get that even going. She is continuing to recoup. My daughter now has a heart condition called a prolonged QT. That prolonged QT was brought on by carbon monoxide exposure. On November 3rd of 2017, a private unnamed company was hired to conduct an air quality test for carbon monoxide inside the building. However, that test was clearly and admittedly performed improperly with only snatch grab samples being taken and ventilation systems and vent testing were not performed. The building hygienist did not properly seal the building, did not turn the boiler system on high and/or for any extended period of time, and only tested sections of the building that not only have high ceilings but also have admitted and reported window leak problems. The boiler and ventilation systems inside of Cranston High School East has known and documented conditions that are in need of desperate repair. This is not the first time that Cranston High School East has had questionable air quality issues and that has sickened students and staff. Reported air quality issues, including carbon monoxide, still all the way back to 1994, as Stichels, you can attest to that, when students, parents, and staff complained on numerous occasions of illness. These issues were ultimately never addressed. The city has been made aware of this time and time again, and there has been no remedy. Being that there are no carbon monoxide detectors in place, our children's health are at risk. Therefore, we, the parents of Cranston High School East, along with key community organizations and members, openly request a second test. We ask that an individual third-party company, along with state building inspectors, perform an additional, longer-term, continual sealed condition test at Cranston High School East. We ask that this test be performed immediately and without hesitation and that any law issues be addressed, repaired, and reported accordingly. The health and welfare of our students and staff should be of the most paramount concern. I watched my daughter pass out for nearly five weeks. She's an abbot cello player, violinist, and guitarist. Last year, my daughter was Rookie of the Year in music. This year, in April, she's scheduled to go down to New York City to represent our city, and I'm proud of her and she should be proud of herself. However, she cannot hold her violin at this point. She cannot remember the pieces of music she's played for seven years. Her grades have gone from 70s and 80s an average student down to 20s. She may never be able to get into a university with these levels. She would be the first person in my family to ever achieve college. She'd be the first female in my family to even enter the doors of a college. I ask that you people please approve a second test. I am working on Bill H. 7041. I will be heard on Wednesday at the rise of the House with accordance and sponsoring of Chairman McEnroe, that you're speaking on that bill. That bill clearly states that all educational facilities and schools inside of Rhode Island must have carbon monoxide detectors inside of our buildings by January of 2019. I've also openly worked with Seth Magaziner and Ken Wagner's office to get legislation put through to make sure that our building is immediately repaired. Conditions in our schools are deplorable. We cannot educate our kids in an unhealthy building and expect them to come out with a healthy education and a healthy mindset. She deserves the education that you people are paying for, that I pay my tax dollars for. That's what I'm asking you for. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could ask, could you give a copy of that letter to our city clerk?
I have 50 copies.
Yeah, if you could give her one so she can scan it instead of all of us so we have a written version of your request so we can then forward to the school committee and take action if we need to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Anyone else to speak on any undocketed matters?
My name is Melissa Jenkins. I live at 135 Arnold Avenue, and I just want to tell you how disgusted I am with your conduct tonight. I just sat here and watched you interrupt your docket to let an undocketed item appear, a lawyer, because she wanted to go to another meeting. You let her speak about an issue that's purely for self-gain. She would gain money if you signed on to that lawsuit. And you interrupted the docket without any introduction for her to let her speak. Meanwhile, Pauline sat in the audience and waited until the end of the meeting to tell you about her daughter who was sick in that Cranston High School. Shame on all of you.
Hi, Suzanne Arena, 88 Lake Land Road. I just wanted to come up and just support what Pauline had to say because my son went there about three years ago to Cranston East and at the time had suffered with headaches. He has sensitivity to paint and different smells and mold. So I kind of didn't really think anything of it and he goes to a different school now. But some of his friends have complained about headaches, a lot of headaches. And then one of the students sent me a picture of tile that she was in her English class that had fallen from the ceiling. And, you know, she caught that and sent it to me and said, "What are you going to do about this?" I'm like, "Well, I'm not with anybody," but I talked to the superintendent and I wanted to make her aware that there's some problems that we have children in school that have, literally, things are crumbling around us. We don't have radon. We should have radon and carbon monoxide. I totally agree. We're in a state that has a lot of slate rock. If you wear up a chapel view, you know that a lot of bedrock, there's a lot of area where they have hidden gases that are caught in between these. It's really important to have. I mean, we have them in houses. I don't really understand why we don't have them in our schools. So part of it is, I don't want to hear that we have a lawsuit going forward because we waited to the last minute from a parent who's saying that her daughter has this. I mean, obviously, the testing that was done was poorly done. Anybody who's going to open windows and take a test, I mean, I'm only half Polish, but I can figure that one out that's not done properly. So things like that really need to be looked at. These kids are going to school in deplorable areas. I've been up to Cranston East, I've gone up there for some of the school committee meetings, I've looked around, and I mean, there's things sticking up from the ground, there's things that are falling off the walls. This is not what we want our children to have. I mean, we do it to our elderly in nursing homes and we're doing it to our children during the day, going to really crappy places. That's not really aesthetically how we want to be and it's not, it's not well-being for our children. So I'm going to go and support definitely this bill. I ask you to, maybe you should put out some sort of memo through the superintendent and through the council to inquire and say, you know, "This has happened, we just want everyone to be aware. If you feel sick, go to the nurse," something. Because I'm sure there's other kids that have had some issues to, we don't want lawsuits. I'm not saying that, but I mean, we want to just bring it to everybody's attention. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Seeing none, that section of the meeting is now closed. Councilman O'Callaghan?
Point of person privilege, Council President, pretending to remember the audience chastising the council. I don't think any one of us is a clairvoyant or a fortune teller. There's no way that I knew what Pauline was going to say tonight, and I'm very sorry about her daughter. I hope, I've been employed working for the school committee in June. My priority will be carbon monoxide detectors, radon detectors, and, you know, upgrading our schools, they need help. But there is no way that any of us knew what Pauline was going to say tonight, and I'm glad she spoke. Thank you.
Councilman May?
I thank your Council President. What Pauline said earlier, I think strikes each one of us in a different way. I thought of that and I'm saying to myself, why are there no carbon monoxide detectors in Cranston East when they had a carbon monoxide problem? Every home in Cranston has a carbon monoxide detector. They sell them at Home Depot every day. How much would it cost the city of Cranston or the Cranston School Department to go out and get a bid and put carbon monoxide detectors in every school building or every classroom in every school that doesn't have one? Now, I heard earlier, when I checked into this, someone told me that Cranston East is so old, it doesn't require having carbon monoxide detectors because that's only for newer buildings. Well, that's a lot of BS as far as I'm concerned. The older buildings should be the first ones to get carbon monoxide detectors. Every school building in this city should have a carbon monoxide detector in every building. I talked to Senator Miller earlier concerning the testing at Cranston East, and he's going to try to get a third-party carbon monoxide detecting company to come in, independent of the city of Cranston, and do another test on Cranston East. He promised me that he would do that when I told him about this current situation. I think it's absolutely terrible that this woman's daughter may be handicapped for life because of negligence. It's not negligence in our part, it's negligence on everybody's part. And we're part of the problem and we have to be part of the solution.
This is an odd tangent to go down. This is not before us tonight. I don't want to stop taking comments on this because it's not really before us. It wouldn't be prudent, we're not taking a vote. I let Councilman May speak. I'm sure his views are accepted and held in heart by all the councilmen here, so with that, I will move on to election of city officials. There are none report of city offices, also none executive communications. You have the report on hiring a special counsel. If anyone has any questions on that, now read the time. Seeing none, there are no informational requests coming out of the administration, so we will move on to claims settled by the solicitor. They are listed here. If anyone has any questions? Seeing none, move on to Council President Communications. It was a very snowy winter so far, had one big storm. The only question and communication that I have is to the administration about, I saw an email today from Joe Koschel with the group out of Garden City regarding the giant snow pile on Midway Road. I know his answer was they've been putting snow there for a lot of years. Is that the case? Is that just someplace where they dump snow? And what do we do as it melts to ensure that the water doesn't get into the neighborhood? I know you may not have an answer for me tonight, but I'm hoping maybe by the next committee meeting on Public Works, you could let us know.
I believe we're going to address that with Director Mason from Public Works. I did see that email come through.
It came through today, so I just, thank you. The other thing was just sidewalks. I know there were some complaints on, I know it's later in the docket from one of the councilmen, but the biggest thing I got when I was reading some of the online blogs were sidewalks and sidewalk clearings, so if you could just expound as to what happened during the last storm and why it took so long to get sidewalks done.
Actually, I spoke with Councilman Stychos regarding this issue, but I will share with the rest of the council what conversation he and I had. If you recall, that storm was quite unusual in the sense that the wind was really a major factor post plowing operations. So as you know, it was January 4th, and that Friday, we did mop up of the city, we went down extra routes to open up certain streets that weren't paved to the best that they should have been, and also the snowdrifts were a factor because they blocked streets. So that was a challenge in the sense that some people who did clear their sidewalks had the snow blow back up on their sidewalks. Our paws put the snow back on sidewalks. With that being said, the Cranston Police Department did enforce the ordinance against people who we received complaints about, and we asked the police department to go out there. Now, one of the things that I would like to make the council aware is, we had several unusual things happening that weekend when, you know, we were still recovering from the storm. One, our resources were dedicated to finding an elderly woman who had been lost or who had wandered away from our house. And unfortunately, it had a tragic ending three days later, but as you can imagine, we have limited resources and have to weigh the priorities on that. Not that having clean sidewalks isn't a priority, but our police department was very tied up with our fire department searching for that elderly missing woman who was later found deceased. Then that Sunday, we had a giant barn fire up on the Seven Mile Road where I believe like 21 or 22 animals perished, including 12 horses. So once again, on that Sunday, we had resources spread out throughout the city looking for the missing women still and dealing with a major fire out in Western Cranston. By the time Monday rolled around, we did manage to write out some tickets and cite some people. I specifically was personally involved with some violations issued on Park Avenue near the Dunkin' Donuts bend near that code, especially because it's part of a school route. With that being said, one of the big challenges about clearing sidewalks after a snowstorm is obviously manpower. When we have the resources, the police department is very vigilant about enforcing the sidewalk ordinance. But please remember that there are quite a few exceptions that we don't know about until we go there and find out what's going on. There's an exception for people older than 62 years old. So they are exempted from having to, you know, shovel their sidewalk. So that's a group of people who, when we visit their home, we're not able to cite them because they are covered on that. People with medical conditions who have submitted medical information to our Department of Public Works are also exempted. The handicapped, people who, you know, are in wheelchairs or in some sort of physical condition that pre- condition that prevents them from shoveling are also exempted. So those are some of the challenges that we face with, you know, the enforcement of this ordinance. But with that being said, I spoke to the Colonel, the manager directly, and they managed to give me a breakdown of how many tickets were issued during that storm, and unfortunately, I didn't print it out, but I can get that information to the council if it's so vicious.
Major Pedaloff actually holding his hand up, he thinks he, I think he-
No, he does.
If you'd like to just relay to the council, I will say Director Lopez a step.
So we broke the snow ban violations with the vehicle build fifteen, after some were directed to vehicles off through the snow ban. Vehicles over sixteen, and we also wrote thirteen, so we can remove violation codes for, and we'll put on Park Avenue, you can approach.
Thank you, Major. Any questions for Director Lopez? I'm Councilman Hawkins.
Thank you, President. Just a response to the Garden City issue, I was in charge, in contact with the manager again today. They've gone and shoveled the wider path, obviously with the amount of snow that we got, the pile is much bigger than it has been in past years. That one, and it was like a mountain over there. As it, we had some of those weather days, it started to melt and flowed down onto the sidewalk. Through correspondence with Joe today, they have gone over there and salted the area, widened the sidewalks, and they promised tomorrow to send a Bobcat over there to dig out a path for pedestrians and clean up the icy area as much as possible.
Thank you. Any other questions? And so, seeing none, before I close, council president communications. For a minute on Pauline's issue, I do know the council feels for you on this issue. It sounds like a couple of the councilmen might have known about it before you came tonight. It sounds like no one did this, but I will lay a resolution urging a new test be done so we can have a hearing on it and discuss it. That's why I asked for you to submit the letter to the city clerk so we could all have a copy of it for our reference as an official request. We can then craft a resolution and have an official hearing on it, so we will do what we can to help you. Councilman Stikos?
Yeah, I have a comment on the-
Snow?
Snow, you know, on the radon, I don't know-
You can do them both.
Okay. I'd like to suggest that we, that the clerk asked the school department for a breakdown of exactly what they, what they did, and if they could just give out, give the council a written thing about the, how they handled the, what looked like an air quality problem at Cranston East.
Yeah, I think that would be good. I think it would be good to first have something in writing, and then if they came before us, maybe the council president could decide whether he wanted to have them here or before a committee, so.
I like the idea of getting a request so we can review it and then make a decision. After that, we could also additionally write the resolution and have it all be done in one spot.
Okay, so we'll get that done, get the clerk to ask them for some information. Moving on to the, thank you, moving on to the snow shoveling, I think we need, on the sidewalks, and maybe this is already in effect, but I don't think it is, and that is that we need a plan so that when it's, when it snows a certain number of inches, that after that, we're gonna deploy our resources, depending on what, you know, what resources we have. Carlos makes a very good point, that there are other things that come up that are more important than sidewalks, but that it automatically kicks in, and that in priority areas, and I know in my neighborhood, the area where the police department did go out and ticket, that's the priority area. That section of Park Avenue from Broad to Parkview Middle School, every snowstorm, the sidewalks aren't plowed, they aren't cleared completely, I get complaints, I call Carlos, and, but that takes a few days to kick in. But if we had a plan that said, you know, here's what we're gonna do when it snows a certain amount of inches, and that these are our priorities, this is where the council several years ago put money in the budget for a sidewalk plow, and the plan would say, you know, this plow is gonna go here first and here second, and, and the last thing I think we ought to consider is, if somebody doesn't take care of their lawn, we have the right to, as a city, to go in, essentially mow their lawn and put a lien on the property for the cost of doing that. And I think we ought to consider the same kind of provision for shoveling snow, because the priority is not to hand out tickets, but the priority needs to be that those sidewalks are clear so the kids aren't walking in the, in the streets. So those are my comments.
Councilman Lanny?
Thank you, Council President. Let's see. My thing was enforcement report on sidewalks clearing violations along school routes. Everybody answered already, but I'll continue. I don't know why, and this goes on every single year, there's always a problem, kids walking to schools. Now, I don't know the radius, the walking radius is about a mile, I guess, for kids have to walk to school, or that they may take buses. But why can't we have a program in effect, the city of Cranston makes sure that every school within a radius of one mile, that the kids walk on those main streets, that those streets, the sidewalks on those streets are plowed. And if the senior citizen lives there, plow it for them, get it out of the way. It's more important the kids walk on the sidewalk than they go down and start walking on streets. I don't know if that's feasible, but I know that we had talked at one time about getting sidewalk plows. I don't know if the city ever bought them in that? Maybe Mr. Councilman, Mr. Lopez would know. Do you have sidewalk plows?
Council President, Councilman Lanny, I believe that the recreation department does have one machine that is designed to work on sidewalks. We use it to clear city property that has sidewalks on it now.
Don't you think it'd be a good idea to get four or five machines? And put it in the capital budget and get, so that we can do all the sidewalks, especially around schools? That's where the big problem is, around schools. It's not in my neighborhood, you know, I, I'm a senior citizen, and I got a health problem, but I have somebody do my sidewalks. I pay them. But if somebody can't afford to do that, something has to be done. Somebody should, the city or somebody else should be able to take care of it, to make sure if there's a sidewalk that's being used to go to a school is plowed, has to be plowed. You can't have kids walking on streets, and I think that's the whole problem we're running into. It's not the neighborhood where there's no schools, I wouldn't worry about that. Older people walking the doors can walk on streets, but children going to school should not walk on streets. And we should do everything we can as a city to make sure that the sidewalks going to those schools are plowed. And if it costs a little bit more money to buy a few more machines that does sidewalks, then so be it. That's a capital budget thing, and I have no problem voting for that during the budget sessions. But I think we have to do, and this is, and this is a year after year after year problem. I've been in this council sixteen years. Sixteen years, we've had the same problem. It hasn't been corrected. Maybe this year, we can come up with a solution, and so next year, we won't have this problem? That's all I'm asking. And the second question I have is the warming centers.
Councilman Lanny?
Yes?
We're technically still into council president communications.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was talking about everything except what you said.
Well, I started the talk about snow and Pauline, so-
Oh, good, I can talk a second time, thank you.
You can, you get another chance, so after I close, we'll come back to your warming Last thing I was gonna bring up is a couple of years ago, we talked about safe routes to schools and trying to develop a plan to do exactly what Councilman Stikos said, figure out what areas would need to be focused on for shoveling. We developed a plan, unfortunately, like things sometimes do with storms of this magnitude, I think they kind of get a little jumbled. I think it's time that we think about building a committee to, through, I would probably say, the Safety Services Committee, or Public Works, the Public Works, thank you, Councilman Lopez, because I know you don't want to do it. We'll, we'll do it through Public Works Committee. So Councilman Hawkins, if you could start to put together a small group of councilmen to look at the ideas of seeing if there are ways we could listen to the director of Public Works on better managing shoveling sidewalks and see if we can come to a solution. So I would ask you to add that to your agenda, maybe we could have Director, I can, thank you, Director Mason come to next month's Public Works Committee so we can just have an open discussion at the Public Works meeting about potentially finding a solution. With that, I will close, council president communications. Councilman Lanny?
Thank you, Council President. Well, I talked about school routes already, so I can continue on warming centers. In this last storm, we had, the city put out a list of warming centers, and they mentioned the libraries as a warming centers. But they did mention, though, that the libraries closed and people were forced to leave the libraries when they closed. Am I correct?
Council President to Councilman Lanny, I've been dealing with this issue with Chief McKenna for, since the end of the storm. For some reason, REMA, the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency who puts those announcements out, or who works for warming center, has either incompetence or blatant ignorance not changed those, that list for the warming centers. I worked with Director Garsha and Chief McKenna, and we reached the conclusion that the best warming center that they can offer is at the Central Library. I spoke with Councilman Stikos about this issue as well, and he brought up a good point. William Hall Library is closed on Friday. It doesn't open, yet REMA keeps listing it as a warming center, so if we get a storm or some sort of weather issue that requires us to use a warming center, then, you know, William Hall would automatically be kicked out. So then, working with Director Garsha and Chief McKenna, we decided that the Central Library, because it's open seven days a week, is the most appropriate location to add to the list for a warming center. We also have the senior center as an option as well as a warming center. So those are some of the things that we're working on. I know Chief McKenna sent me an email this morning that he had once again requested for REMA to change those listings. If we have, if we continue to have problems, I will reach out to the appropriate state agency to try to get that corrected.
All right, thank you. However, warming centers, say the Central Library, we have a power outage, it's five below zero. Do they stay open twenty-four hours?
No. The warming centers operate early during business hours. There are other shelters that will accommodate people who need that kind of shelter.
Are there any other shelters in the city of Cranston that would accommodate anybody in a twenty-four hour period?
Possibly REMA headquarters, they use that as a warming center. I'd have to get a more comprehensive list for the, from the state. I believe during this last storm, the governor declared that CCLI in Warwick and CCLI in Newport, ULI in Kingston, and one of the, I don't remember what building, the REMA College, was to be used as a spare emergency warming center in case of a storm. If I can also point out, Councilman, again, speaking with Councilman Stikos, I did inform him that during the storm, we received zero requests for either a warming center or emergency shelter, mostly due to the fact that we did not have the power outage because the storm wasn't as bombastic as they had predicted.
I'm a little aware of that, by the way. I know you didn't give any requests, but in the future, if you go by the places that you told me were warming centers, CCLI in Warwick is the closest place that an individual in Cranston who needs twenty-four hour service in the event that they lose their power in a blizzard, which means they have to drive through the blizzard to get to this location, would have to go to. It seems to me that we should have something within the city of Cranston that we could use as a warming center in case of an emergency, and currently, we don't.
Let me, let me just clarify our situation. We have the flexibility to do it. We look at each storm on a case-by-case basis to see if there's a need, but we're certainly not gonna expend resources or manpower to mend something that there's no demand for. Now, if someone had called and said, you know, I'm in a bind, you know, I have no power, I'm freezing, we could open up the senior center through Director Barone and Chief McKenna from the fire department to accommodate someone, but, you know, we take each storm on a case by case basis.
I certainly understand that, and I'm not disputing what you're telling me. However, I still, my position is still that we should have a location available when there was a need. Now, you said we didn't have a need the last time, but that doesn't mean we don't have a need the next time. And I hope that you have something available, whether it be the senior center, or a fire station, or a library that can be open for twenty-four hours until the power comes back and people get back to their homes again.
If that situation arises, I can assure you that the senior center can be opened up on short notice, and we can accommodate people who should need those services.
Okay, thank you very much, considering that. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Councilman.
For the videos, Councilman?
Yeah, thank you. We're gonna have budget hearings coming up very soon, and I'd like to know if this council would be in favor of videotaping, like near the council meeting, the budget hearings for transparency reasons so the general public can know exactly what we say, what we do, and how we handle our budget, and how we debate it.
To the council vice president and finance chair?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Mr. Councilman Lanny, I have no problem with that. We had a hearing last year, and I let virtually everyone in the auditorium speak. It took many hours, and I never stopped anyone from speaking, so to have it filmed, it really doesn't matter to me. I'd actually like to have two sessions, because I think what happens is if we have a three-hour session for the public, by the time we get to ask our questions, we're so tired that we have nothing left in the tank, to be honest, but I know what you're saying. I really would like to have an ability for the council to examine the experts, so-called. We have the finance chair, I mean, the finance director, we have the accountant for the school department, we have the superintendent, and all the officials, and we were left with, you know, I would say, half an hour maybe of time to ask questions, so I'd like to, everyone to think about that, whether we could do it in two sessions. I know it adds another day, but I just remember it getting very late in the night, and we're, you know, we're so exhausted that I don't know that we're able to do our job. And just one follow-up question, if I may. And I'm gonna direct this to Councilman Vivekio, because you seem to be the authority on the admin hall. I know the, they went to court, and they got a state, and it's in court right now. I haven't any idea when that court case is gonna get settled, or a decision's gonna be made. It's hard to say, if I may, Council President, it's pretty hard to say. It's, you know, it's gonna go through the process. I think we were trying to, I know the city was trying to expedite it, I know the solicitor was talking about trying to get it to fast track somehow so that we can get something done on it. It's, it's an unfortunate situation, just to bring it up to speed, what happened is- What happened is that, that was filed, that the legislature gave the state six months to implement their, the 10% rule. And basically, what they did was give them time to open up more shelters so you could disseminate some of these people to different areas of the state, rather than having every registered sex offender that's homeless end up in Cranston. The state chose, did not do anything about that within the six months from June 30th, I believe, to January 1. So that's the, that's the crux of the problem, but I don't know how fast it's going to be settled. I know that it could be resolved pretty easily if the state would just open up, spend a few dollars, open up another facility, and disperse the crowd a little bit, they may be able to resolve it. But as of now, there hasn't been any movement by the state government or the courts.
All right, thank you. And it looks like Director Strom is up to talk about your idea, Councilman Lanning.
Yeah, Councilman, I, you know, I've been doing the budget for nine years, I believe you've done it even longer, but one of the things I wanted to point out is that we have our budget hearings, in the early, and still is no one that ever attends, very seldom. The only time we have attendance for a budget hearing is when the school departments at Cranston East Auditorium. I don't have a problem in having it videotaped or whatever, but my point is that there doesn't seem usually much interest when we're doing our budget hearings.
You know, and I kind of agree with you, I've been seeing budget, you know, and they're very boring for most people. But the same thing can be said about council meetings. If you look out here, I don't see anybody, a standing room only crowd, but when you put it on video, and it's on TV, people at home watch it. And it's called transparency, and that's all I'm interested in, is transparency. If they don't want to watch it, they don't watch it. But they have the opportunity, without coming out in the middle of February or March, at night, after getting out of work and spending, and eating a quick supper, and getting over here to do a budget hearing, they can watch it on TV. They can see how government actually operates, and that's all I'm interested in.
Well, I think we try to be very transparent, number one. Number two, the budget hearings then begin till April.
Through the chair, which is me, to Council Vice President Vivekio. If you could just do some, a few minutes of research and see how much it would cost us to have a videographer come to all the budget hearings. I don't know if we have the ability to post them all on Vimeo, we may, we may have to put them on the city's website, but it's worth looking into. I mean, at a bare minimum, potentially look at doing police, fire, schools, the biggest budget hearings if it becomes too arduous, and come back to the council next month with what you find.
That's fine.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Councilman Stykos, you are next on the Council Member, Communications.
Thank you. I just, first, I'd just like to follow up on Councilman Lanning's comments on the warming centers. I think that what happened this last time, and it, I realize a lot of it has to do with the governor and not the city, but the governor was on television saying, "If you lose power for two hours, get out of the house and go, go to these public facilities that are set up." And so, I mean, first of all, as Carlos pointed out, one of them was Hall Library, which was closed and snowed in. But that's a fairly dangerous scenario if in the middle of a blizzard, your power goes out, and you head off to a warming center, and there isn't a warming center. Or it is a warming center, I can't believe that people really know the difference between an emergency shelter and a warming center. You know, you go to, you go to the Central Library, and then at eight o'clock, somebody says, "Oh, you know, time to go home." But the governor's told you, this is the place to go for safekeeping. So I do hope that, I hope you can give us a report on Chief McKenna's conversations with REMA about that. Could we get that on the, maybe the next council agenda?
Yeah, I think we can add videographer feedback and warming center feedback to the next council agenda.
Okay, thank you. I also want to get a report on the status of the sidewalk cost share program. I know that last year it was funded at $50,000, and this year, the council cut it to $10,000 in order to provide more money to the schools. Can we get a report on what's happening with that?
Director. Thank you, Council President. Yes, so far, as you stated, it was budgeted at $10,000, it was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine sidewalks, that was cost share program. They totaled $11,699.50. We've stopped, now that we went slightly over budget.
I'm sorry, so that you stopped?
We stopped the program, obviously, at this time of year, we wouldn't be doing it anyway, but I mean, we've stopped it because we're over budget. We've done nine, and that's all we've done, and going into the spring and summer, we're probably, unless the council wants to continue this program and run over budget, we'll have to wait till next fiscal year to continue it.
Well, does the, does the administration have a position on whether to go over budget? Because there must be money in other areas that could be?
We have not discussed that. It's not discussed at this point. We probably will be discussing things of that nature, excuse me, till the fourth quarter.
Is the, is a waiting list being kept?
That would, I would have to discuss that with Director Mason, I'm not sure.
All right, would, maybe when Chairman Hopkins, maybe at the next Public Works Committee meeting, when Mr. Mason comes to discuss the sidewalk issue, he could, the sidewalk shoveling issue, he could talk to us about, about this and the waiting list.
All the approvals are done through Mr. Mason and also the engineer, Nick Capazza.
All right, thank you. Next was the, the status of the contingency fund for the Cranston Public Schools.
Yes, Councilman, there's been no requests so far up to this point. That money still remains intact.
So, basically, you're waiting for them to say we need money for?
Yes, they usually, so, requests to leave from Mr. Balducci, requesting X amount of funds for a specific need.
Okay, have you talked with them at all about the flooding at Cranston East, and the flooding at Edgewood Highland, and this air quality issue, and expenditures for those things?
No, I have not discussed with them on the air quality at all, but I have, my understanding is that that was a hydrant, you know, line to the hydrant that burst and flooded Edgewood Highland School. And I'm sure it's going to be our position that Providence Water, through their insurance company, will have to make hole on that. Now, how that's going to evolve, I don't know at this point, but they, in my opinion, they're responsible for that. They did, they were proactive, they found another facility on a temporary, I believe, basis that they cleaned it up. The leak that occurred at Cranston, I believe it was in a bathroom, I don't know all the specifics, I believe the window was ajar, I think it was some, maybe some negligence that, you know, that it froze the piping, I'm not quite sure, that's something you should maybe have a discussion with the maintenance, building maintenance director at the school department. But that was more of our responsibility, but I believe what happened at Edgewood Highland, we have to address it, we can't just let it happen without, you know, being active and rectifying it, but the issue is that it wasn't our fault there, it wasn't a pipe that burst at the school.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I wanted to ask about was a, a cost breakdown of the incident with fall of the letter and disorderly conduct.
Council President, if I may, express that. Councilman Stykos, I could speak with the Finance Director. When you say cost breakdown, it's kind of a very general request, but my concern is, I think we're encroaching really closely on a personnel matter, which would be covered under the Open Meetings Act, and probably would be more appropriately discussed in closed session. I, I don't know the specifics, but my understanding is that this all emanates from alleged misconduct on the part of the employee, and that would seem to fall within the category of job performance or allegations of misconduct. I think I have an abundance of caution, that's how it should be done. Of course, it's up to the council, while the Act doesn't say that you have to go into closed session, it says that you may go into closed session. So, in my opinion, without knowing much more, Council President, on the abundance of caution, I would recommend that this not be discussed in open session, but rather than in closed session.
Councilman Stykos?
Yeah, well, first of all, I was much more specific in the email I sent to Director Strom. What I'm looking for is that, I read in the newspaper that both the people who were involved in this were placed on administrative leave for some period of time, so I'm interested in what that cost. I'm interested in whether there were health insurance costs of the one man who went to the hospital. I'm interested in what overtime was paid to fill their positions while they were on administrative leave. And all those subjects, they're not to do with personnel, they're to do with finances, and we discussed those issues quite extensively in public session during the police ticketing scandal. So I think it's, the public has a right to know what that cost. I'm not asking what the administration thinks happened, at least not right now, but I would like to know the cost of, whether there are lawyers that were hired, what the legal fees were to do this. And of course, I'm aware that, from the newspaper, that one gentleman is suing the city over this incident, and certainly will accumulate more legal bills over that. And I don't, I don't know if either of those men are back to work. So I would, that's what I would like to hear in, in public session. If people want to talk about what happened, what the discipline was, if there was any discipline, I think that certainly is an appropriate, the discipline would certainly be an appropriate topic for executive session.
I think you're right, if it's, if it's limited to just the dry numbers and nothing more, but my concern is that it's kind of difficult to discuss one without discussing the other, but again, it's, it's within the discretion of this body, I can just offer my opinion. I just thought, I have an abundance of caution, that might be the more prudent way to go, but it's certainly up to this council.
I will say, Councilman Stykos, my only concern is the last time something like this happened, and you were kind enough to ask for financials, it did take a very quick right-hand tangent into questions and discussions on things that we should not talk about in open session. If it's just you're looking for an accounting of it, I don't see there's an issue with that, the issue will be when people start to ask questions. So if the council wants to ask questions on this, I would ask that we go into executive session. If this is just a relaying of finances, it can happen in open session. So is any member of the council going to want to ask questions to the administration on this matter? I'm asking gentlemen, to the other eight of you, is if anyone's going to ask, want to ask questions, we should put it on the finance agenda and go into executive session at that point. If it's just still a relaying of numbers, we can do that here tonight. Councilman Stykos?
Would I make a suggestion that it's a little hard to know whether you have a question until you see the, the report that, we kept the report, and then?
Add this to the Finance Committee agenda?
Yeah, if people want to ask questions, then it would be kind of your call on where it comes.
I think that's probably the best approach, we'll have the report emailed to the council, and then at that point, if the councilmen have questions, we can add it to an agenda for either public hearing or an executive session. Does that?
That's fine.
Okay.
Unless he has it here tonight and can give it to us.
He has the figures, so it's up to you. If you want to get an email, so you can have it, or if you want to go read the news, you can run it down.
I mean, I would like to hear it now, I wouldn't mind an email also.
Okay.
Or my kid can eat it too here.
All right, we'll give you, we'll give you a piece of cake, and you can eat it. So Director Strom, if you'd like to review the numbers that Councilman Stykos has requested.
Okay, this incident between the two gentlemen, I have a cost here for their administrative leave of $29,387. That's for 10 days and 11 nights. They both are back to work. I believe one of the gentlemen is out on, uh...
IOD.
IOD. Well, actually, he's not on IOD. I believe he wanted to go out on IOD, but I think he's just...
Well, you can't. Yeah, you can't.
So anyway, I don't believe it's IOD that he's on.
It's something.
But he is out. The other thing is that the additional money that was spent to cover them during this absence was another $19,572. So the total is, well, the total is $48,958 rounded off. Currently, I do not have any legal bills. There's been nothing submitted to our legal department at the date. I have a, a communication from Penelope Stelvero and Mogawa to Director Moxian, and there is a litigation that is going on through, I believe...
That, we'd have to, we'd have to talk about that in executive session directly.
Okay.
The costs, we can discuss.
But there is no cost involved yet.
All right, now, I'll ask this, and slowly, so we, I mean, this, you said, one guy is is out. Now, is that in?
He's not working.
He's not working. Is that in connection with this incident?
This is information... Council President, we cannot go along this road because there's other issues involved that we're not talking about in public. If you'd like to go into executive session, we have that option, but we, the administration will no longer answer any questions regarding this issue.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Actually, executive session on a personal matter is not an option this evening, as the open meetings require that the employee involved be given a notice, and they have a right to demand that the hearing be held and open.
Thank you, Maria. The executive session on questions for this would happen at either the Finance Committee or the next council meeting. So with that, Director, Councilman Stykos, you have been given the information, would you like me to add this to another hearing so you can have questions answered?
Well, I do have one other question, which I'll just throw out there so that the administration can hear, although I did ask for it in an email, which is the hospital or the medical bills connected with this incident. So if it, if we need another, if we need it on the agenda to, to get answers, yes, please.
Council President?
You can ask the question. I don't know if they're going to give you an answer, it sounds like they're not going to.
I'm sorry.
I don't know if that was a question...
I don't know if that was a question to the administration or...
Well, it was just a statement that I would, at some point, I would like that information. If they're not talking anymore tonight, then they, you know, they can't give it to me tonight. But I think that's a legitimate question.
Council Vice President? As finance chair, I would strongly urge that if we're going to do anything, it would have to be in executive session. You tread very lightly on personnel issues, HIPAA issues, things that can get us into far worse trouble. I know you have, you want answers to questions, but sometimes you don't do it in a public session, especially when there's pending litigation. So, if you want to do, if you want to do that, I would strongly urge that it be only an executive session at this point.
I tend to agree with you, Council Vice President. I would ask that, it sounds like Councilman Stikus has some further questions. If we could add the executive session pursuant to R I G O, I can't remember what they are now, personnel to the finance agenda, so we can have a executive session properly advertised, giving both employees the ability to come if they so desire. Councilman Stikus, I would ask the whole lawyer questions to the executive session. We have the financial data, as you requested, for transparency. Anything else, we would have to just do an executive session under an abundance of caution. Councilman Alcetto, if you're all set. Councilman Stikus, Councilman Alcetto, you are next.
Thank you, Council President Freeman. Yeah, I have some questions for the Department, and basically, it's criteria and policy for overnight parking. When does a car, at what time during the night, is it in violation? If they could go over that for me, I'd appreciate it.
Major Padilla?
Good evening, council. To give you the short version of that answer, it's pretty simple. Our third shift officers, given how many are out there on every given night, it could be a different number, anywhere from eight to 14. Each officer is assigned to a beat between 1:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. They're to monitor that beat if there's any vehicles parked in the street for two consecutive hours between 1:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m. They will initially mark the vehicle by calling in dispatch, giving out the location. A lot of that comes from constituent affairs. We have complaints of certain areas that are given a good look at on certain evenings. But you have to be aware that throughout the course of the evening, and we make over 3,000 arrests a night, many of them, 3,000 arrests a year, so most of them are at night, and many of them are at night. So if an officer is sidetracked by making arrests or responding to a call, we talk about prioritization, that's probably the lowest of any prioritization on any given night, given the, given the fact that we respond anywhere between 70 to 100 calls per night on third shift. So if you break that down with eight officers on any given night with 80 calls, that's 10 calls a night. And quite frankly, they may not be able to get to that target area. There are some, like, we may have 13 cars, 12 cars, so the saturation patrol is great in an area, and they're able to tag, at least try to monitor certain areas that are, that come to our attention, where they tag certain number of vehicles on a given night. But it's different every night. It's very unpredictable.
I just have a couple of questions. Thank you, Major, for that detailed analysis. So, first question, if the car is parked in the street at 1:00 a.m., it's not ticketed?
No, it's not.
It can't be taken until 3:00?
Correct.
Well, between 1:00 and 3:00, can an officer give a warning to that car?
We don't usually give warnings. It's hot enough to get out there, to monitor for two hours, to write a citation. We don't give warnings. We're not going to ring someone's doorbell at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning and tell them to move their car.
The problem where I see it, you know, Thursday nights, Friday nights, Saturday nights, those are the difficult nights. Because people are either having parties or visiting, people staying late. And crass, the officer may target, may not target a car, but see a car marked in his notebook and want, have the intent to return two hours later. But as you said, that police officer has a call, has to respond to some call, something more important. So that car really never gets a ticket. But when it's first identified and put on a log pad or report, if they gave that car a warning, and we still have an ID of the registration, the car, sort of a chronic problem, that would be in the log that night. That's why I think when it's cited initially, police officers should give a warning to that motorist. So at least it's in the log. Therefore, if it's a chronic problem, that player will keep popping up. That's my argument.
The only issue is, what would we be giving them a warning for? If we have to make sure they were there for the full two hours?
Oh, then you're giving them a warning on the fact that it's after 1:00 o'clock and they're parked in the street. They haven't, they haven't violated anything, but it's after 1:00 and they're still parked there, correct? That's my logic. I don't know. But the issue is that, most often, the police officers tied up, they can't get to that car, back to that car after two hours. I would say more than 60% of the time. So that motorist now knows he can stay there 2:00, 2:30 in the morning and then leave because he's not going to get ticketed. If the warning is issued, you're going to have some type of system or analysis to say, hey, this car's around here at this time quite often. So if your officer that evening is not busy, they're going to know that car's there. And that more often than not, that car's going to get ticketed. That's my point.
Councilman, a few years ago, we used to have a detail on Friday and Saturday, actually Saturday and Sunday mornings. At the time, I took that a lot. When you go out there and you start tagging, and you put them, you'd have a notebook and you start putting all the different vehicles in, when you go back, many of these vehicles, especially being Friday or Saturday night, that go into the morning, the people visiting, they may be playing cards, they may be working games, doing whatever, they're gone. So we'd be spending all this time going up, giving people warnings that there's, there's no warning, that they have, like, you may visit your relative, your sister, go to your sister's house every Friday night. Every Friday night at 1:00, we'd be ringing the doorbell saying, you know, you might get a warning, well, I'm ready to leave. So it wouldn't really be time efficient to go and do that.
I see what you're saying. You're saying the time you take for an officer to do that, they could be doing more important things. That's your point.
That plus so many of the vehicles, when I would mock them down, or tag, you know, in my book, mock them, when I went to go back to tag them and got to wait two hours, they'd already be gone because they were just visiting. It's not a chronic person.
So the problem where I see it is, is they're not in violation after 1:00 o'clock. There's going to be a two-hour hiatus. And I think a lot of people know this, so they're going to be in the street after 1:00, and they're going to play. They're going to play with that time lapse. Therefore, you know, why do we have that two-hour time lapse? Why do we have it, why don't we just have a half-hour time lapse or an hour time?
Somebody could just pull up, and they're not parking overnight, they're just pulling up.
At 2:00 in the morning, or 1:30 in the morning?
At 1:00.
I just think a two-hour hiatus is too long, in my opinion, but you explain it. Thank you so...
You didn't make the arguments, sir.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Appreciate it. You answered my questions. Stay tuned. Thank you, gentlemen. Any other council member communications?
Councilman Favicki?
Just a couple of things. One of them, I guess I could ask, Major Padilla, maybe you could answer this question. There was a report of a recent attempted break-in on Sully Drive the last couple of days. I don't know if you, someone called that in, or if there was ever a report on that.
On Sully Drive?
On Sully.
A residence or a...
A residence, yeah. I could certainly look it up.
There was. The officer that went, the officer that did go there, put out a bulletin and emailed to everybody in the department to keep an eye on that. Because I guess there was suspicious people and facts that happened with that. So we all got an email on that.
Okay. Thank you. Just a couple of little things. With regard to, I did get the email on the snow in Garden City. Thanks to Councilman Hopkins for following up on that for us. I did reach out to Mr. Coates with regard to that follow-up meeting for the Garden City people. I haven't received a reply yet. I guess he's got some new responsibilities in his job, but hopefully we can find out what, you know, now that the holidays and the snowstorms are over, for the time being, we can get that together. The other thing, I'd like to know, through the chair to the administration, Carlos, maybe this is something you could help me with, with regard to the, I received a letter with regard to the TIP program, with regard to Dean Parkway and Machanacut Valley, that Mr. Alvedi from the State Department of Transportation said there was no money put aside for anything to repave that, or to redo some of that street from Budlawn going on up the hill. So I just was wondering if, you know, there was some talk about that program, so maybe for the finance meeting, maybe we could see if we could find out something. I don't know if...
Forgive me, Councilman, I just need clarification. What is it that you'd like me to present?
Well, I'd like to see whether there, I knew there was some discussion with the state DOT with regard to that Dean Parkway, Machanacut Valley intersection, and for some money for repairs there. But one of my constituents received a letter from DOT, actually, director, directly, believe it or not, and it was from Director Alvedi from DOT, saying that that was not on the agenda, and that please have your city officials apply next year.
Councilman, if you could get me a copy of that constituent's letter, I'll have Director Mason look into that, but as you're aware, the TIP program works at the whim of R I D O, and projects that, you know, have been in the pipeline for years, all of a sudden fall off, or they don't get the funding. I mean, that's not the only area that we're waiting for.
I know. It's the reason for my concern.
Yeah, and, you know, Restover Avenue is a perfect example. That was, should have been paved already and worked on, but they keep pushing it off, pushing it off, pushing it off, for whatever reason they have. So, but I will, if you can get me a copy of that letter, I will follow up with Director Mason, and maybe perhaps for the, either finance or the public works meeting, subcommittee meeting, we can investigate it a little further.
You could, you can put it on my calendar if you like, Council President. Thank you. Any further? That's it.
Who wants to go? Councilman Lanning?
Thank you. This is for Mr. Strong, my good friend. I'm looking at the legal expense analysis that we received today, and I noticed that the ongoing pension dispute, or I should say, dispute with Captain Gilbo, we have an additional Is that in addition to the previous amount that you've given us in the past, or is this all new?
I believe the report is year-to-date, Councilman Lanning. Is this the total?
Yeah, it's year-to-date. But I came up with, Councilman, since the last breakdown that I gave you?
Yeah.
I'm showing that it was another $37,000.
All right, so your total is the same as this?
Well, this is the total of all legal expenses. Is that what you're referring to?
Just Captain Gilbo's expenses.
What I did was, I just happened to do this today more quickly. I know that it was in addition to what I've already presented you?
Yeah.
And that totals, when you look at the various legal firms relating to this case, it came to $37,000.
Gee, I added these up, and I come up with $112,806.
What are you referring to?
I'm going down this, every time I see Gilbo, I add the amount.
Well, I've already provided that to you. Don't forget, that's not just one month, that goes back for...
No, no, that's what I'm asking. And that's what I'm asking, this is the total.
$37,000 from the last time.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So the $37,000 is not the entire amount, that's from the last time?
Correct.
But this $112,000 and change?
I thought it was more than that, Councilman.
You think it's more than that?
Yes. But I gave you, I don't have it with me tonight, because I wasn't under a judge.
Point of information, this case happened additionally last year, so there's some charges last that I would have carried over, so the report you're looking at is just... Just yet, just this year, this fiscal year.
Just this fiscal year, that's correct.
All right. Next, Councilman, can you give me a complete update?
Yes, I'll bring it up to date from what I provided you, adding this as also.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Councilman Alcetto?
Thank you, Council President Freeman. Just a suggestion, because the budget here is around the corner, so through the president of the administration, if possible, to follow up with Councilman Lanning, say, can we get a cost of the snow in the machine, so we'll know when we go into budget session, the amount we're talking about? So if we need to have two or three in the capital budget, we'll have that figure before you.
Since we opened the door on the budget, I would just say, I'm going to ask that the Council Vice President in the next, before the next council meeting, actually, going in February, so before the March council meeting, questions you have on historical figures and values that you think you may need, we should get those questions in before the March meeting. That way, it will give the finance department, sorry, before the beginning of March, to give the finance department a month to kind of pull those things together.
Exactly, exactly.
So that request will probably be coming out from him at the next finance committee meeting, along with the agenda and how we're going to handle the meetings. So you beat us to it, Councilman Alcetto. Good job. Any additional comments? With that, I will close. Council member communications, old business, there is no old business. Introduction of new business, Madam Clerk.
Proposed ordinance 1-1801, amending the 2008 capital budget to include renovations at Hope Island's middle school softball field, to be referred to the finance committee for a hearing on February 5th. Proposed ordinance 1-1802, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City, Cranston 2005, entitled zoning, a change of zone for 350 Park Avenue, petition filed by Park East Realty, to be referred to ordinance committee for a hearing on February 15th. Johnston sewer connection request for 180 shun pipe from Cardino Apple Processing, also one from Cataldo Associates for the intersection of Simmonsville Avenue and Plainfield Street, both to be referred to public works for hearing on February 15th. The following claims to be referred to claims committee for hearing on February 5th. These are property damage claims, and these are all alleged incidents. Thomas Perez, November 9, 2017. Ronald Rotondo, December 28, 2017. Young Lee, November 24, 2017. Kevin Palciak, December 9, 2017. Amanda Stroh, December 9, 2017. Ralph Pedigree, December 10, 2017. Deborah Paquin, December 14, 2017. Lori Ashness, December 14, 2017. David and Lisa Farah, December 14, 2017. Nuya Grenier, December 14, 2017. Iris Cohen, December 16, 2017. Ronald Rotondo, December 28, 2017. Patricia Kajewski, January 4, 2018. Linda Rusi, January 4, 2018. James Wilson, January 12, 2018. And we have a property damage and personal injury claim from Rafino Garcia, December 10, 2017. And a personal injury claim of Scott Bergatino from September 6, 2017. That is all I have.
With that, I would say motion to send the business to the proper committee. Motion of second, under discussion. See Madam Clerk, please take the roll. Yes?
Yes. 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 Looks like there's some miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk, because since we heard Beachmont, I'm assuming we can take that off. With that, the city council's next regular monthly meeting will be held on Monday, February 26, 2018, unless called for an emergency. I want to stand motion to adjourn.
Council President?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
May I mention the meeting is intended to be held at Cranston High School East?
Yes. Due to the volume expected regarding the Cumberland Farms matter, I have made the decision to hear the meeting at Cranston High School East. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for my anyway. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, I have a second. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen, for your work.